It's six o'clock. I would like to call this meeting order and welcome all of our guests here this evening. We have with us now also Commissioner Robert Jones. Commissioner Jones, I would like to ask you to deliver the invocation, please.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. I'm glad to. Husbos pray. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we've been grateful for another year. Be with us, Lord, as we transition over to the year to come. Be with the ones, Lord, that have served this city over the years and have blessed it with their ability and their attitudes and to keep it in straight and line like it has been for many years. And we wish and pray, Lord, that as the city of Jasper goes forward, along with the county, that guidance and the leadership will be mostly driven by your inspiration and how we feel, the way we live one day at a time. Be with us. Be with the ones that are retiring, guiding, directing the path we have to go, in your holy sweet name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
The council received a copy of the agenda. I understand we have one change under new business. We have with us tonight Mr. Joe Walker to discuss our liability and workers' comp insurance renewal. I'd like to add that on the first item under new business. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda without addition.
So good.
Got a motion?
Say.
Motion second, discussion. Being on the paper vote by show of hands. Thank you, Council. That's unanimous. The minutes of the November 4, 2019 regular meeting, Lisa.
Mayor called me to order promptly at 16:00 p.m. He requested Lonnie Waters give the indication. He called on Councilmember Tony Fountain to lead the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by Council. City Clerk Lisa Wolf stated that there was one change to the agenda. The reading of the minutes should have been on Roman numeral five and numbering afterward would change accordingly. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to approve the agenda with the change. Councilmember Rand said executive motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver called on his hold to read the minutes of the October 7, 2019 administrative public hearing held at 9:00 p.m. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion to accept the minutes as read. Councilmember Rand said executive motion, motion carried unanimously. Ms. Wolf read the minutes of the October 7, 2019 public hearing held at 5:30 p.m. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to accept the minutes as read. Councilmember Rand said executive motion, motion carried by a vote of four with Tony Fountain abstaining as he was absent from the meeting. Ms. Wolf read the minutes of the October 7, 2019 regular meeting with a change noted that Councilmember John Faust made a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to accept the minutes with a change. Councilmember Rand said executive motion, motion carried unanimously. Item A under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to update the council on subletting of city property. Mr. Douglas stated that he had not had a chance to create a user agreement and check on the liability issues involved with the leasing of city facilities as requested by Mayor and Council at the September meeting. He stated that this was a priority to get this document to Bill Pickett for review, but unfortunately he had nothing for this month's meeting. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to table this item once again. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made such motion. Councilmember Rand said executive motion, motion carried unanimously. Item B under old business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to present the service delivery area map amendment for the changes approved in the July council meeting. Mr. Douglas presented the map that was prepared by the Regional Commission for Council's review. He stated this map will be sent to the Department of Community Affairs for a 30-day review after which it will be ratified and formally amended. He stated that he was asking that Council review the map and to make sure that it reflects the July meeting amendment approval. No action taken. Item A and B under new business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to give a report on the Jasper Planning Commission. Mr. Douglas stated that on October 15, 2019, a planning commission public hearing was held to consider whether special land use permits are to be added to the city's zoning ordinance. He stated that there was no public in attendance and the planning commission voted to recommend the addition of the special land use permit. Mr. Douglas presented to Council how the permit would affect the ordinance. A copy of the ordinance amendment is attached here too and made up part of these minutes. Mayor Weaver stated that he wanted to voice his concern over Council making decisions on who would be granted the permits. He stated that there could be potential lawsuits. Discussion with Council followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion that the recommended addition of special land use permits be approved and that this be considered the first reading of the ordinance amendment. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. More discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item C under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to present to Council a request from the developer of Piedmont Village, a development previously approved by Council, to change the side setback on the outside periphery from back of the car. Mr. Douglas stated that they are requesting to change the setback from the originally approved five-foot to a four-foot setback in those areas. He stated that city staff has no issues with this request and that the utilities lie in front or to the rear of the buildings and should not be impacted. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to approve the requested setback. Councilmember Rand said executive motion, motion carried unanimously. Item D under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to present to Council special events plan. Mr. Douglas stated that lolly drops on South Main Street had requested that on Sunday, December 1, South Main, be closed from East Spring Street to Highway 53. He stated that East Spring Street and Highway 53 would not be affected. He stated that the owner of the business was planning an event to have a play area for children and to allow photos with Santa and my reindeer. Owner Darren Fitcher was also present at the meeting to make this request. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Rand said to make a motion to close South Main Street from East Spring Street to Highway 53 from 12:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. on Sunday, December 1. Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Douglas stated that for Council information, the Rotary is sponsoring a public safety dinner on November 12 and the Jasper Police Department, as well as the Jasper Fire Department, would be in attendance. Mr. Douglas asked if Council desired to designate a contingency date for the Christmas parade, which is planned for December 7, if the need should arise due to inclement weather. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to set December 8 as the contingency date for the parade. Councilmember Rand said to second the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item E under new business, Mayor Weaver called on Finance Director Lisa Wolf to present the 2020 operating budget for Council's review. Ms. Wolf stated that the public hearing on the budget would be held on November 12 and we would expect to adopt the budget at the next regular council meeting held December 2. Discussion with Council followed. No action necessary. Item F under new business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to present an obligation on an old contract for GPS on the city vehicles and equipment with FleetMatics, now Verizon Connect FleetMatics. He stated that due to the former city manager discontinuing the contract with the company and not providing a 60-day notice prior to March 15, that the company is stating the city is responsible for the entire year of 2018. He stated that the collections agency offered a compromise in the amount of $22,527.8. He stated that he is requesting guidance from Council as to how to proceed. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Rand said to make a motion to allow the city manager to negotiate the best resolution with the company. Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item G under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Water and Sewer Superintendent David Hall and Mr. Douglas. Mr. Douglas stated that there was a $75,000 budgeted use of cash for the year 2019 to install water pipe to connect to the Grandview Water System. He stated that the city has spent approximately $53,000 of these funds. He is requesting another $38,240 to get the line to a point of 1,800 feet from the county facility. He stated that staff had requested quotes for the third and final phase of the line. There was only one quote provided from Calvin Meter Company in the amount of $38,239.36. He asked that the additional funds be approved in excess of the $75,000 budgeted. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to approve the expenditure of $38,239.36 for the materials from Calvin Meter Company. Councilmember Rand said to second the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item H under new business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to present ordinance amendments to the city's defined benefit retirement plan. He stated that the city had been requested by GMA to restate the defined benefits plan in accordance with IRS standards. He stated that he is asking for modifications to the defined benefits plan to allow for the rule of 80, change the multiplier to a flat 1.5%, remove in-service retirement, add up to three years military service to count towards city service, and increase minimum weekly hours of work to 34 eligibility. He stated that the pension plan modification committee had met and reviewed the modifications. He stated that if Council wished to move forward with the modifications, this could be considered the first reading of the ordinance amendments. Mayor Weaver asked for committee report. Councilmember Proctor stated that the committee had met on October 23 and had concluded that they were supportive of the modified version of the plan. Mayor Weaver asked how much this would cost the taxpayers. Mr. Douglas stated that according to preliminary figures, that this would increase the cost of the plan by approximately $123,845. He stated that the percentage funded would drop from approximately 98% down to approximately 79%. Mr. Douglas stated that he felt these amendments would help recruit and retain employees. Mayor Weaver stated that his concerns with these changes could put the plan in jeopardy in the future. He also stated that he was concerned about the funding of the plan and employees retiring from the plan at an earlier age. He stated that he wanted the citizens of Jasper to know that ultimately the taxpayers are funding this increase in employee benefits. More discussion followed regarding details of the plan. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to approve this document as the first reading of the defined benefits ordinance amendment. Councilmember Rand said to second the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item I under new business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to present a change to the farm winery section of the siege ordinances. Mr. Douglas stated that there had been an interest from a winery to open a store in the city and sell wine samples that are produced on site. He stated that the current ordinance does not address for the inclusion of the manufacturer of wine. He is proposing to add to the ordinance to authorize the winery to manufacture in addition to sell and distribute. Mr. Douglas read the ordinance amendment. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Rand said to make a motion that this be approved as the first reading of the ordinance amendment to farm wineries. Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item F under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to present to Council a list of alcohol renewals for 2020. Businesses who have paid for alcohol license renewals since the last regular meeting and are requesting approval are as follows. Able Asian Cuisine, Quick Trip Corporation, Jasper Beverage, Terrace Food Mart, Potato Patch Players, The Last Catch, Buffalo Luke's, Saifon 2017, Jasper Convenience, Carolina Pizza Company, Pizza Hut, Trout's Beverage 1 &amp; 2, BBQ Proverb, Johnny's New York Style Pizza, The Old Mule House, Dos Margaritas 3, Teak 1, which is Dunn's Food Mart. He also stated that Quick Trip Corporation, number 829, is changing registered agents to Joshua Stephen Grasek. Mr. Grasek has met all the requirements and his background check results were good. He asked that you accept the changes in the registered agent. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the license renewals as presented. Councilmember Rand said to make such motion. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated that Council needed to go into executive session in order to discuss land acquisition. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to go into executive session. Councilmember Rand said to second the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver closed the meeting. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver opened the meeting. Mayor Weaver asked for committee updates. Councilmember Proctor gave an update on the Economic Development Hiring Committee and the Perro, Roper, Cool Property Development Committee. Finance Director Lisa Wolf gave the financial report for the month of October 2019. Lonnie Waters gave a report on Rosen Streets. Chief Greg Lovell gave a report of police activities for the month of October 2019. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of October 2019. Being no other business, the council, Mayor Weaver, entertained a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Rand said to make such motion. Council is scheduled to convene next at the public hearing on November 12, 2019, and at the regular meeting we held December 2, 2019.
Entertained a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Motion to approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Being on the paper vote with show of hands. Unanimous. The November 12 public hearing.
Mayor Proton Faust called me to order promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested Brandon Douglas give the indication. City Clerk Lisa Wolf led in a recital of the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Proton Faust asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved. Councilmember Rand said to make a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Kurt Raffel seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Proton Faust opened the floor to comment on questions regarding the proposed 2020 operating budget. There were no public comments. Councilmember Kurt Raffel made a motion to adjourn. Mayor Proton Faust adjourned the hearing. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular scheduled meeting on December 2, 2019.
Entertained a motion.
Motion to approve as read.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Being on the paper vote with show of hands. Unanimous. Under old business, item A. Mr. Pickett, Mr. Douglas, subletting of city property update.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council. Mr. Pickett and I briefly talked today. Unfortunately, I did not give him the draft user agreement until, I think, Wednesday. With the holidays, he and I didn't have a chance to connect, so it's not ready at this moment for any, I guess, comments or input. I don't know if Mr. Pickett wants to add anything to that. He and I are just going to talk about what's been drafted and see what we can do.
You guess you would like to move forward.
Yes, sir.
Entertained a motion to move this project to the next council meeting?
Make a motion to table the two lights meeting.
Motion table.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Being on the paper vote with show of hands. Unanimous. Item B, ordinance amendment, special land use permit, second reading. Mr. Douglas.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, Council, you may recall from the minutes and then from last meeting, this would be the second reading of an ordinance amendment to include a special land use provision into the zoning ordinance. This, among other things, is just another tool as it forms the zoning. Didn't have any changes from the November 4 meeting, so in its current state, mail packet, it's pretty straightforward and there could be sort of changes in thoughts or discussions or ideas. And obviously, this was helped for both in terms of wanting to utilize the special land use permit as a tool for property owners or property owners who are not willing to rezone their property, but to allow for a type of use for the property on a special permanent basis, as long as it meets the use compatibility of their neighbors. So the zoning did not change in the case of Mountain City Business Park. Mountain Business Park, this is kind of a tool that could help address some of the concerns that have been expressed by the owners out there.
Okay, it was read at the last meeting, if I recall. Bill, well, that's surprised with us tonight being the second reading of that reading at the end. Entertained a motion to approve? Entertained a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the special land use permit.
Motion to approve the special land use permit. This is the second reading.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Being on the paper vote with show of hands. Unanimous. Item C, ordinance amendment, defined benefits, second reading. Mr. Douglas, Mr. Pickett. Pension Plan Committee.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, Council, as you recall, we have been asked by the Georgia Municipal Association to restate our existing plan. At the time, I advised them that we were storing the opportunity to amend the plan. As such, they allowed it, so this would be an amendment of the existing plan, but to remain compliant with GMA in terms of restating. So GMA went through a 170-page master document that we don't have to approve, but that's the umbrella in which our plan is up underneath. So we will be approving the restatement of the master plan and approving any sort of either restating our existing plan or in terms of the first reading, any sort of amendments to the modified amendments of the plan. And, Mr. Mayor, I can just hit a few of the highlights in terms of what the amendments are in terms of the proposed changes to the plan. It's going from eligibility requirements of 20 hours to 30 hours. So in order to be eligible for the defined benefits plan, that would increase after January 1, 2020. So all these apply January 1, 2020. So anyone that's underneath it would be grandfathered in, which I don't think in accordance with what the committee, when we talk with Stella and Finance, I don't think we really have any up under the 20 hours. Then the amendment to provide up to three years of service credit for prime military service, if they're 100% vested, it would prohibit in-service distribution of benefits. What that simply means is if you become eligible for retirement, then you would have to retire. You could not retire on paper and then continue working, receiving what we would call double-dipping, you're getting the retirement from the city and continuing to work for the city. The rule of 80 would be an inclusion of an alternate normal retirement age or eligibility. So right now, the normal retirement age is 65 years of age. The early retirement age is 55 years. The alternate normal would be what this document would include as well, that your age plus your years of service. If it equals 80, you would be eligible for that if you're 55. So essentially, you still have the normal retirement, the early retirement, and then you have the alternate normal retirement. And then the monthly normal retirement benefit formula would go from 1.25% calculated with your years of service and your high-five salary, it would go to 1.5, calculator the multiplier. That's amendments to the document.
Okay, and if this will not cost the employees, correct any additions, or it will be added to your budget to cover the expenses?
Correct. This would be in the 2020 reevaluation. So the 2021 bill would include the approximate 120-something thousand of additional costs.
The 2020 will not have an increase on our expense for the city?
But the already actuarials that we've received for this year did go up already before this even restatement or amendment. Went up to, I think, 150, 158.
Was that budgeted this year? Is that in the budget?
Well, that'd be for the 2020, 2020 budget year.
Right, which is the budget we just want to prove tonight. It is in the budget.
We got the actuarial before, so it should be included in it.
And we can't see in that. Okay, so anyway, with that being said, we entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance for the amended adoption agreement for the city of Jasper, Georgia's municipal employees' benefit system, defined benefit retirement plan. This will exclude the general addendum of the plan to adopt the IRS-approved plan documents, including the restated master plan by the Georgia Municipal Association.
Can I get a second?
Second. I heard eight.
Any discussion? Being on the paper vote with show of hands. Unanimous. Item B, ordinance amendment, farm winery, second reading. Brandon, Bill.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I would like to apologize. Lisa called this, I think, Wednesday when we were in talk. And I think we would like to, I've asked Bill to weigh in, but I think we'd like to, at the staff, table this request to table this due to the fact that the way that the ordinance read, it still includes the Sunday sales time of 12:30. So in light of the November 5 election, staff is later on tonight presenting with you all an ordinance for the early sales. So rather than approve this and then have to go back through, we thought it was prudent to just say, let's table this. We don't have anyone beating our doors down. Need to utilize this right now, so we could include that into future ordinance.
Entertained a motion to table.
Second.
Got a motion.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Being on the paper vote with show of hands. Unanimous. All the old business under new business. Item A, liability, workers' comp insurance renewal. Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Joe. Tell me, did you pass this, Brandon?
I'll be honest with you.
The first item to look at is the premium summary. And that is this year's premium. And the sheet behind it is last year's premium. Really, as far as rates are concerned, we're holding steady on the rates. The only thing we have is some new fire truck, new vehicles, that has brought the premium to this level. What I'd like to bring to you is your physical damage, comprehensive and collision deductibles are $500 and have been for years. And we might possibly save some money by going to $1,000 deductible, if that's something y'all would be willing to entertain. I had that ran, and if we did that, it would be a decrease of $31.67 on the auto and it dropped the umbrella rate $258. We've had, in the last three years, we've had a total of 22 auto liability claims and three of them would have been under 1,000. And then the auto physical damage, 33 claims, and 10 would have been, they paid out 10, 10,000 would have been under $1,000. So over a course of three years, we possibly could have saved some dollars there. And eliminate the frequency. Where underwriters look at is frequency of claims, not the value, but the frequency. And that's what I'm trying to avoid, is keep the premiums going the way we've got them going right now. But I'd like for y'all to consider that if you would. Okay, on the workers' comp, we're down, saving about $5,000 this year on that. And if you look, behind there is last year's workers' comp figures, payrolls, and rates. And if you'll notice, every rate seems to be down because of what has been happening. And you, Stella, has just done a wonderful job with lost control people. And they really like working with her, and y'all are on the right track. We talked about this two years ago and got it started, and it's starting to pay off.
So you've got a couple, if I go back to your, it looked like a slam dunk on your workers' comp, but you had some open windows for your insurance that might need to discuss in order to get into a motion.
Okay, all right. As far as the deductibles, would the council entertain a motion to raise the deductible to $1,000 on the auto?
Can you explain again for the council the savings that would incur? Unless we're in a place of $1,000?
Based on $1,000 deductible. Based on a thousand-dollar deductible, on automobile this year, it would save you thirty-one sixty-seven. And on the umbrella, it would drop the cost of it because the auto's going down slightly. It would take two hundred fifty-eight dollars off, and thus, your premium would be one forty-one eight ninety-eight versus one forty-five three twenty-three.
Okay. Any question, Council, for a call for a motion, just an official?
Mr. Douglas? Staff committee?
I haven't seen it, so I'll defer to Lisa.
Okay, we, we budgeted how much, and how much is this?
Actually, we budgeted a little more than what we came back at.
So with that, we entertain a motion for the thousand-dollar deductible, which is recommended by Joe?
I would recommend it.
No, no.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Ben Alphair, vote with your hand. Joe, okay, on the workers' comp, anything to add, Joe, before we call for a motion?
No, I think Stella deserves the credit.
Well, give me the number, and I think the guy that's probably not getting hurt might help a lot. Okay, with that, would entertain a motion?
The number for the renewal is two oh three one thirteen.
Okay.
Last year was two oh eight.
You got a motion? Got a motion? First and foremost, appreciate it. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Ben Alphair, vote with your hand. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Easy enough?
Appreciate it.
Okay. Item B, here in adoption of the two thousand twenty operating budget, Lisa, Brandon?
I was just gonna say, on October thirty-first, we advertised the budget, made it available to the public. We presented it November first, two thousand twenty, I mean, for the two thousand twenty budget. On November twelfth, we held a public hearing, and tonight, we're hoping to have a budget, the twenty-twenty operating budget adopted.
Brandon, anything to add?
Nothing else.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to accept the twenty-twenty budget.
And presented, and advertised, and presented, and public hearing. We got a resolution. Would you read the resolution? I think that's, please, why do you?
Whereas the council budget committee reviewed the mayor's staff's proposed operating capital budget for calendar year twenty twenty for the City of Jasper, attached herein and made part of this resolution through this reference. And whereas the city council of the City of Jasper, the city council reviewed the mayor's staff's proposed operating and capital budget for calendar year twenty twenty for the City of Jasper as recommended by the council budget committee. And whereas the agenda for the November fourth and December second, twenty nineteen meetings of the mayor and city council were duly posted, as well as the agenda for the November twelfth public hearing, and the proposed twenty-twenty operating budget and all related material were made available to the interest of parties. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and council of the City of Jasper adopt the twenty-twenty operating budget resolved this second day of December twenty nineteen.
Entertain a motion?
Motion for a resolution and budget approved.
Go ahead, Ann.
Okay. Make a motion that we accept the resolution for the budget for twenty twenty.
Motion to approve? Motion and a second, discussion. Ben Alphair, vote with your hand. Unanimous, thank you, Council. Item C, I call license request for renewal. Brandon?
Mr. Mayor, Council, in the package you'll see, we have had all but four presented before y'all. I'd like to pay a special note to the bottom that of the four, and I'll read those as in smoking mode, ULC, Pueblo Cantina, Jasper Boothies Church Street, and Fats Cafe. Staff has advised Fats Cafe that, and I don't think we've received it today, but they have not provided their payment. But in light of the fact that today is December second, and it's through December thirty-one, I told them we were not inclined to have a special call meeting, request at staff level, that I would ask you all if you're okay approving this with the disclaimer caveat, whatever, and if Bill's okay with it, that all of this would be approved, and then Fats would be pending their final payment before year end.
I don't see your problem with either. Entertain a motion to approve those? May I ask before we do that, let's go ahead, entertain a motion?
Motion approved, presented with the exception of Fats Cafe, assuming that eight-four year end.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Who, may I ask, who did not apply the businesses that's in existence?
All, all, I'm sorry, everyone up to this point, so you all have already approved all of them?
But all, all, all we knew except those that might have gone out of business this year?
Correct, yes.
Good, okay, I understood you. Any other discussions? Ben Alphair, vote with your hands. Got you down, thank you, Council. Thank you, Brandon. Item D, watershed protection plan update. Brandon?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask David to come on up if y'all have a mind, just because there is a history to this. In terms of, we are required by EPD to do these matter, measures of watershed monitoring. I believe in twenty eighteen, we had solicited a couple of quotes, and I believe CCR, facilitated by Turnip Seed, had provided a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one quote. We put this on your agenda this evening, just to put it out there. Number one, I didn't have the history with it, so I wanted to get out there. The twenty eighteen quote that we did receive for the three-year, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one for CCR, the quote was twenty-two thousand one eighty for the year twenty twenty. So the quote we received was actually twenty-one thousand six thirty-five. So in accordance with the budget you all just approved, we are well within the budgeted of twenty-five thousand, which is what we budgeted, in anticipation of when we get the final quote. This is just an estimate in twenty eighteen. So with that, if you had any specific questions, I would defer to David as far as what this is, what's needed, if y'all are pretty well acclimated with everything.
So this is under budget, so this is basically a plan update? No, no action's gonna be necessary?
Well, I mean, unless, you know, y'all would entertain?
They've already approved it once, haven't they?
No, just for one year.
Okay.
Two thousand nineteen's the only one you signed.
Oh, okay, just approved for the one-year payment, okay, so they've got it.
And then you're running back to the, all that for that, so.
Go ahead and get them updated on what this watershed protection?
Watershed protection plan, basically, is stating all the areas where our sewer district is, these companies, these companies will come in and monitor microbiological and chemical testing of the streams. And through that testing, and so, then they will set up parameters that will be used in the future by EPD to set guidelines for our permits for wastewater, probably water also. So all Chinese cities, municipalities that have permits through MPDS are required to do this. And it was being done through your mayor's group that you met with, RDC.
RDC, said it originally.
Yeah, and then I think that played out, and now the private companies, private companies.
We paid for it just for that to be, it was funded to its established plumbing. Any questions, Council, on the watershed protection plan update?
So it's my recollection that we only approved the one year. I think there seems to be some concern that we had approved all three.
No, I understood, I, I, the way he made the presentation, I thought it was it.
And that was, I don't think it was clear, what, what I had understood was, I thought it was a three-year proposal, but it was actually a three-year estimate. So the actual estimate in twenty eighteen?
Was for one year.
Was, it was a one year. They just kind of, I guess for budgeting purposes, had said, hey, it would be twenty-two thousand one eighty for twenty twenty, but then when we got the estimate this past November, it was twenty-one six thirty-five, and it's like in the package.
Less than they estimated, you said.
So it's a one year, so next year, unless Council wanted to put this back out for solicitation of additional estimates, what we would do is, we would probably present you all again with, if their estimate is in accordance with their previously. So it's a little, it was a little confusing for me, but I kind of somewhat got it.
You answered, you were David's question. After twenty-one, will this have to be reduced for continued monitoring at these prices? Will it have to get a new plan, new bid?
Yeah.
So this, this price is gonna stay with us from now on?
Yeah. Yeah, because this also monitors not only for your wastewater and your water, I forgot to mention, also for your sorbotage program, to see if your oxygen is properly or not. That's what these salmon sites, whenever they grab these salmon, it's gonna monitor and make sure you're taking care of your sorbotage also.
So why would we not put it out for bid, just like we did last year, if we're only doing one year at a time?
And I don't have any objection to that, I mean, I'm, I don't know.
Well, are we close to the time that we need to start? We should have already done this if we were going to?
If they, I mean, as long as they got their, you know, approval in January, that's when they're gonna start it. They can't start.
You got time to do a?
We're gonna solicit out if.
Request for proposals? Okay, so you want to table it?
Take a motion, it'll be tabled to live, or bids.
Okay. Got a motion to table, need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? Ben Alphair, vote with your hands? Item B, ordinance amendment, early Sunday's alcohol sales first reading. Brandon, Bill?
Mr. Mayor, Council, as you recall, we had been on a journey to, before the voters' referendum for November fifth, which they subsequently approved for the early alcohol sales. And what this entails is that now, procedurally, we would need to amend our alcohol ordinance to reflect what the referendum had asked, which was to move the alcohol sales back to eleven a.m. to twelve thirty p.m. Right now, it's twelve thirty p.m., so the voters have approved. So procedurally, this is just something we need to do by going through the ordinance amendment.
And I believe, Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this will be the first reading for this, and you'll need to read this next month as an official reading.
Yes.
And that's always best read at the last meeting, to the first meeting. So we entertain a motion to approve, and this is the first reading of the early alcohol sales that was approved by referendum?
Sure.
And a motion?
Second.
And a motion, second, it's second. Ben Alphair, vote with your hand? And, Council? Item L, reduce rate applications, Lisa?
Council, I have one application according to what they gave us, they do for, for these rates.
Entertain a motion?
Question to approve, the reduced rate application?
And motion to approve the reduced rate application?
A second.
Motion and a second, let me give that to John. Any discussion? Ben Alphair, vote with your hand? Thank you, Council. Yes, we have an executive session. Apologize for inconvenience. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss and involve land acquisitions. Got a motion? I appreciate it. Got a second, discussion, Ben Alphair, vote with your hand. We entertain a motion to reopen the regular session?
I'd make a motion when?
John Baff just made it.
Sorry, second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? Ben Alphair, vote with your hand? We are now reopened. With that, I'd recognize Councilman Proctor and Mr. Rep Phil to give us an update on the hiring as a committee for the economic development.
So we're in the interviewing phase right now. Last week, we interviewed four candidates. We've not eliminated any. We do have some follow-up interviews coming up, and hopefully be making the decision fairly soon.
Thank you. For all Rover Full Property Development Committee update, Mr. Proctor?
No update on that. We did, as you know, we put the free app in for the grant, and just sort of waiting to hear your feedback on that.
Financial report, Lisa?
Council, in the area in your packet, you have the financial report for November twenty nineteen. The general fund right, right now is at a loss of eighty-two thousand nine hundred. I think most of the revenues have been posted, but I was looking at why, and it's mainly because of the TAVT tax that we lost. That's about a hundred thousand dollars that we, is one reason we're down. We collected a hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars in sales tax, a hundred nineteen, a hundred ninety-nine dollars, and we collected as of this time of two thousand eighteen. Total this year, we've collected one, one million, two hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred and three dollars. That's general fund. Sloss Fund, we collected eighty-nine thousand, three hundred forty-six thousand dollars for November. If you're looking at your report, it's showing current period a hundred seventy-nine thousand, but the October didn't get posted until November as well, so we had, we had actually two payments posted the same month, but the actual received for that month, for the last month, was eighty-nine thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars. And at the back of the report, it shows the cash balance, I believe it's a hundred twenty-eight thousand, it's in there at this time. Yeah, a hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars, we got in the cash account with Sloss moving forward. Water fund is looking, looking pretty good, water sewer fund, we're ahead by a hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars in the black. Of course, there's, it's early in the night, a lot of bills will come in to offset that this month. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions?
Questions, Council? Thank you, Lisa. Lonnie, Rose, and other reports?
Mayor, Captain? Just a couple things is, we've had questions about the signage at the intersections where the light mass arms were put up, because there's not a East and West Turk Street sign, and at Sammy McGee, there's not a Noah Drive sign. I've been in contact with DOT, they're in the process of having new signs made, and that will be corrected. We did have the road meeting at the county today, and it was brought up about. and it was brought up about the truck route. So, you know, we discussed that prior at another meeting, and that is moving forward, going to get in touch with the D O T and find out exactly how they want the letters worded as far as the truck route and everything. The county said, once I found that out, that they would be willing to sign off on their part of it, and the city signed up on their part. And now we'll put a truck, truck route coming out Philadelphie and by fifteen, and out the north end of Old Talkin' Rock Run. And that's about it.
Question, counsel?
No, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Police report, Chief Lo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, police department for the month of November responded to seven hundred eighty-seven calls from an I-1 center, responded to sixty-one motor vehicle accidents, issued a total of one hundred citations for following one DUI, fifty-four speeding, four seatbelt, four unlawful use of wireless device, texting and driving, one record striving, thirty-one miscellaneous violations, four suspended over revolting possession of marijuana, Georgia State Patrol, Michigan Patrol, thirty-four, a grand total to City Court, one hundred thirty-four citations, seven state warrants, six were taken, fed by proceedings, felony 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 felony, order of confinement misdemeanor, driving without license misdemeanor, one fed by taking motor vehicle felony, one bond condition violation misdemeanor, one harassing communication, and one obstruction of law enforcement. Miscellaneous call events, fifty, fifty-four alarm calls, eight disorders, six harassment, four trespassing in a room, thirty-nine suspicious activities, seven domestic, one burglary.
Had, had some salmon run deer?
We did, had a, a bit of two things going on at one time, we were parked one of them on our fence.
No reindeer run loose?
No reindeer run loose, and the motorcycle ride come through.
Thank you, chief. Keep going.
Good evening, Mayor, council. For the month of November, the city's fire department responded to ninety-two calls. Those were two truck fires inside the city, none outside. No vehicle fires in or out, no grass or brush in or out. Four auto accidents with injuries inside the city, none outside. Forty-seven emergency medical responses in, nineteen out. Thirteen other calls inside the city, seven outside. As of the end of the month, it was twelve hundred and fifty-five calls for the year. Honors and legends, two special plans for construction or renovation, nineteen.
Question, counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Do you imagine a reindeer sign?
Didn't get ruffled by a reindeer.
Been known, the rag shouldn't become a fluke.
Mayor, if I could, if I can just speak for just a moment, on behalf of the city, being an elected official is not easy. Politics are not easy. The path to politics is one that winds and bends, and has mountaintops and ades. We learn quickly as elected officials that there are expectations of us. Each person in our community has expectations of us. We learn quickly that a lot of times we're not able to meet each person's expectations of us. One thing we do know is that our personal expectations of ourselves change once we get in office. You two have experienced this throughout the years. One thing you like to do when you get in office is try to save the world. That's the mindset, at least that was me. I don't know about you, it's been a minute since you've taken office, so try to think back twenty-seven something years. You realize you're doing good just to read your agenda items, just to know what the charter says, have lunch with local stakeholders, study your committing names, visit the local businesses, and return the calls and the emails that you receive daily and weekly. You realize that none of this has to do with you being a grandfather, a dad, a son, a brother, a spouse, or just an employee. You have taken on the weight of being in politics to better our community. It is very rare that people point out all the positives, and there have been a lot of positives. And both of you have helped lead this city into a bright future. Most time this is done, and no one praises the hard work, the dedication, the long days, the endless nights, or the calls that you receive. The times you do get praise are far and few between, but they do get you through until the next disaster strikes. It's always looming right around the corner. You stay the course out of love for our community, knowing what you're doing is making a lasting impact, and that's exactly what you've done. We may not always agree in politics, but we work towards a better tomorrow. Mr. Mayor, we do not always agree, but we have always ended our conversations in a handshake, and that I appreciate. And Tony, I ran against a guy one time, and he beat me pretty bad in the polls. But I'll tell you what you did, you treated me with respect and dignity, and for that, I'm thankful. Both of you have treated me kindly, not only as a citizen, but as a fellow elected official, and I thank you personally for that. You have over a decade of service, Tony, and this city thanks you. Mayor Weaver, you have almost three decades. My entire life almost, you have been the mayor of our fantastic city. The memories you have made will last a lifetime. Some will make you laugh, sure some will make you cry. Both of you have shown how strong you are with your leadership and your commitment to this community. Please know that as you part ways as an elected official of the city of Jasper, you both leave an impact on our city. Jasper is truly better because both of you have served this city for so many years. The employees, they all thank you. The citizens, they thank you. The entire city and the elected body, we all thank you. Thank you all very much. We'd like to present both of you with a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
And since I'm now being appreciated, we'll end like we always have, with a handshake.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
If I might, take a moment while you're unwrapping what you have there. I would like to say thank you to council, thank you to all the citizens of Jasper. Doing a little multiplication today, twelve regular council meetings for twenty-six, twenty-seven years and four months, four hours and fifteen minutes, but who's counting? But that's three hundred twenty-four for twelve, for twenty-seven years, and plus four months is three twenty-eight. And I think Jim Looney ran one meeting for me when I had to be in court defending the city terribly, I might add, but I was doing my best. And John did, upset him for meetings for me when I went early to a water conference. So I guess that would be three hundred twenty-six regular council meetings over the twenty-seven years and four months. But anyway, I enjoyed every minute of it, and I enjoyed, actually, at the council meetings, I, a few times you get a little tense, and your blood pressure jumps up a little more than you want it to, but as a rule, I look forward to the council meetings because if you got ego like I probably have, I kind of enjoy the tension from time to time. But all that being said is that the city's been good to me, and I hope I've been good for the city. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Tony, would you like some? Can I get a picture of these guys?
Is that everybody?
But Tony, Tony, I didn't mean to, I should have let you go first, but you know what I'm like?
I'd like to say it's been a bit of privilege and honor the last twelve years, lived during my life. Kind of bitter for you, though. Thought I would look forward to this night in the way I did. We've had a lot of good times here, but we've also had some that haven't been quite as good. Just like Herb said, in the end, we tried to work through, and I hope what time I spent here, I hope it has been, I hope it has been good for the city. I'd like to thank all the city employees, the ones that are not here, they work hard every day. The ones that are here, I'd like to thank you all. And I'd like to thank the mayor for being my mayor, my city manager for all these years. He's done a great job. And I just hope that what we've done here has been positive. Thank you all.
I would like to add that I wasn't for Tony, or as much as his input for the city is, he looked so much like me when he got elected, I used him as a body double. Thank you, Tony, so much, more than, more than just a body double.
That's why I rode my horse.
Chief Wood, counsel, could we get a photo around the corner? Like, I thought, I tried to make that motion. You did entertain a motion to adjourn. Me to take you out one more time?
Yeah, one more time.